And then we, because there is an apartment building right next door to it, it appears that it is zoned for multifamily. The whole block of the buildings just across the street in the north are older homes that have been cut and multifamily apartments. I wonder if those will go down next. Those buildings seem to be deteriorated somewhat. And as I say, it's not just in our neighborhood, but these people west of the house at 401 and West Springville was torn down recently, but there was a fire in that house sometime past and it was partly boarded up. It wasn't ice worn. As obvious that house had to come down, but I wonder what's going to be in its place. Those small business buildings to the west were three buildings and if I think, if I'm not mistaken, those were developed by Chester Frederick. But we do need to do something about them. These people at 401 West, the old house across the street was once a Victorian house. It's been cut apartments and it appears to be dilapidated even from the outside. Well, if such an ordinance passed, will that building come down? The house next door to it is also once a historic home, cut apartments. Will those 502 and 504 West Elm be the next to come down? Some houses, I believe the one that's 604 East Elm was moved from west area make parking lot with Presbyterian Church, but as I say, too much of the historic building stock in the area has been lost to quote unquote progress. We need to do something about it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Yes, would you please come up and state your name and address?
Good evening. My name is Rex Bradfield. I am a professional engineer and land surveyor. I filled with those cards out. Didn't it get up there?
I don't have it.
Well.
Is it one of the little white cards?
Must've dropped it in the mail. I'd like to speak just very briefly against this ordinance. I'm a property owner, have a duplex and I rent it out. And in listening to the comments of the people in support and against this, I'd like to point out to the council that any time that we entertain thoughts of government involvement into private enterprise, we almost always do not reach the point where we have addressed all the issues and we create more problems than what we have. I've heard great discussion about the destruction of buildings and then I've heard people say that if they, the ordinance is passed, that they'd like to have a moratorium on the destruction of the building. That leaves the person who owns that building with being forced into either repairing it or considering bankruptcy or something else because the city's not letting them have a viable option of reducing their obligations or their costs by simply removing the building. Quite frequently, as a land surveyor, I do what is called an ALTA survey, American Land Survey, and those are generally done when businessmen or property owners are going to refinance their property. They need a very detailed survey of it. And when interest rates fluctuate, you go back and you recertify those things. Many, many times I have done those surveys and there have been multiple buildings owned by individuals and when I come back to do them again, the old houses are gone. The reason they're gone is not specifically because the business owner is making that suggestion, but in the refinancing, he cannot refinance those. The banking, the lending institutions will not finance those without changing the ordinance, the interest rates. And so his option or her option is to tear those things down. I kind of like what New Orleans has where New Orleans maintains the integrity of the entire neighborhood by having ordinances in place that prevent this type of action. But they do not tag them to other things. That is a preventing action that says if you're going to destroy something, you have to put something up that looks exactly as it did. If that is what the council is considering, I think what you should do is consider the former ordinance rather than the latter of the one that's before the council tonight. I think you're treading on very serious ground here in suggesting that you are going to use a government hammer in the interest of life and safety when you're dealing with business issues here. And quite frankly, if they're not worth living into, they're harder rent. And if they're hard to rent, it's hard to make the mortgage payments if that rent is what your retirement is based on or whatever. So I, I am not in support of the ordinance as it's written because as another gentleman issued before, there are many ordinances and God, as an engineer and a surveyor, we get to go through them all the time. There are many ordinances already in place and they just simply need to be enforced. Pounding this hammer out again when those other ordinances in there brings in the question, is there overlapping ordinances? Are there problems being created and will it give the city a hammer to do things to people that they really don't need to be doing? Just pay attention to your business as it is. So I ask the council to think about this just a little bit longer because I believe the, the issues of the properties being torn down is certainly an issue that I see happen all the time. I think it will, this will exacerbate it and I think it'll happen even more frequently. Thank you for your time.
Charlie?
I have a question, Mr. Bradfield. Do you ever work in Bloomington Normal?
Pardon me?
Do you, do you do any work in Bloomington Normal?
I have done some over there. I've done some ALTA surveys over there, yes.
Do you find it's any different working over there than over here?
I don't get called back over there as frequently as I do in this area. The ordinances over there are similar to what are in this area and I don't notice anything of particular interest as I see it here, but I think that's simply because I do more surveys over here than I do over there. Did you have a specific?
No, they, they have, they have, they have rental registration and inspection over there and it's not been a problem. They've had it for many years also. Normal's had it for 30 years. We've had it for, we've had inspections for 20 years. Normal's had inspections and registration for 30 and they're growing faster than we are.
Now, the big problem is, is that it's, it's a risk for the lending institutions, one apartment owners, and they all do it.
Okay. Then, then, then if Bloomington, which passed it several years ago, is a normal or growing faster than Champaign-Urbana, then maybe it's a good thing to pass this, not a bad thing? Could that be possible?
Everything's possible, but as I say, I, I think you really need to look at it very closely to make sure that you're not creating a problem where landlords, as discussed here before, will just simply bail out.
Are you aware they were one of the few cities in the state that doesn't have, with, with such a large college presence not having this kind of an ordinance?
I am aware of that, yes. Yeah. And the problem that I had was, and thank God for the internet and thank God for glasses, is going through all the ordinances, you very, very easily made available to the general public on the internet. Many of the issues and many of the things that are raised on here, you can, you can go to other ordinances and make a, an interpretation of what they're saying, but it looks like they're already being covered by other things. Are they being inspected? I don't know. That's, you know, that's an administrative policy and how often you do the, the inspection for existing ordinances, I don't know that. It's not my business.
In Bloomington Normal, they like do it every year, some of them every two, three years. They're much faster rate than we do it.
Well, one of the things that you have to take into consideration is, and it causes great concern is, for instance, in southeastern Urbana where I live at, I live in 2101 and a half pond, I forgot to state that. You drive through that area and you look at the, the numbers on the, on the buildings and almost all the numbers have the same number plate. They all have a copper number plate. And about 80% of those that have that copper number plate, they're what was in, well Ronald Reagan called them, gold medallion homes. In other words, they were the best electric home that you could possibly buy at the time that they were built. Those homes don't have three wire, ground faults in them. And so if this ordinance goes through and people get, they, they realize that because of ground fault indicator, you've got to have a third wire. How much expense is going to be involved in there? I mean, if you're talking pulling the wires out or rewiring things, you're talking a very significant expense that the city could, could bring to task. And all of a sudden, you may lose some buildings that you're really surprised you're losing because it costs more to tear out the old wiring and put the new wiring in. There are many things in the code that are well thought out, very necessary for life and safety issues, but there are a lot of buildings that just don't comply.
One thing that a lot of people are confusing tonight is the difference between property maintenance code and rental registration and inspection.
Okay.
And they're two very different things, though they are companion pieces.
Right.
And, and some of the comments made tonight really need to be addressed with respect to the property maintenance code and how that comes into play with respect to inspections.
But it will go back into the codes. This, this is obviously referencing back to the codes. You've got to be very careful about that. As I say, life and safety is certainly something that you must consider. As an engineer, we put the life and safety of the general public above all other considerations, including monetary.
Yeah. I would, I would ask that you look at the property maintenance code revisions that are coming.
All right. I look, I did the same thing he did. I fell victim to, I downloaded that stuff and then I came here and I, I thought, gosh, it didn't look like that's, that amendment has been in there. So the internet stuff was a little.
I've got one extra copy if people need it.
Okay. Well, I'll get it from Libby.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council? Okay. Oh, you would, well, please come forward and state your name and address and please keep your remarks to five minutes or less. Thank you.
My name is Dave Johnson. I live in the 700 block of West Illinois Street. I love Urbana in spite of myself, in spite of itself. But I can tell you the current system is not working. I can tell you that firsthand. Over the last 20, 30 years, my block has gone from a 50/50 mix of owner occupied and rentals to now at a point where we are the only single family on the block. And we have overcrowding, we have cars, we have dangers. I just want to address two things. The first side of this, that the reason I support this proposal is I'm seeing articles in the paper about homes that are entirely unsafe, ground faults, no handrails, there's many other things that have been documented. And I also know firsthand in dealing with students on the, on my block, trying to help them out sometimes, that there, there are simply situations where the, the structures are not safe. And Urbana always says we don't have the resources to, you know, do something about that. If this is a self-funded, if this is a self-supporting proposition, to me that makes a lot of sense. The other thing besides life safety is I have done studies, I requested data from the county assessor and I've done a very small analysis of assessed values of homes in an area from Bucie to Race, from High to Washington. This what is commonly now referred to as part of the Wuna area. About 25% of the 272 homes that I got information on, 25% are rentals. The appraised value of those is 33% less than the appraised values of the owner occupied. I appreciate all the other issues here about concerns for demolition of historic properties, trying to bring updated or old outdated properties up to code, for example, with this issue about medallion homes without the three wire and so forth. But I, I can definitely say, based on my experience in my block in Urbana, what we have now is not working. And I really think that if we give this a try and do it, do it properly, it could be win-win for everyone. I, I am concerned about overzealous inspectors. So we have to be rational about how we you have to be rational about how you enforce and, and get the updates incorporated. But let's, let's make a safe environment and let's have the rental properties pay their fair share of our tax.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Let's move on then. The first item, old business. It's ordinance number 2006-08-109, an ordinance to establish a rental registration program for residential property within the city of Urbana. Libby Tyler, did you want to say something? Our community development director.
Well, just first I want to apologize. Apparently on the website, we had November version of the ordinance posted and we did get that switched to the December 29th. It's dated at the top and that is the current version that's being considered by council this evening. We've also handed out some suggested amendments for council consideration from legal this evening. And I, I think the previous amendments were from that November version, so apologize for that. I know this document continues to improve through the review that it's receiving and we're just trying to catch eventualities. We are hopefully going to move into implementation. I did have a comment to make about some of the comments made this evening in terms of whether this would promote demolitions. I absolutely believe that this will help to preserve our older rental housing stock. It will save these buildings, not hasten any form of demolition. And the reason I say this is that increased frequency of inspections can help to prevent fires. It can catch maintenance issues that will be small, that can get larger. So I think this is designed absolutely to preserve and improve the safety of rental housing. There seems to be a notion or a fear that there's a demolition by inspection type of situation and that might be true in some communities, but certainly not in Urbana. That we do have for 27 years systematically inspected, all of our multifamily, that's three units and up. So we've been in our older apartment buildings and we know that they're in good shape. This program, of course, will increase the frequency of those inspections. That will help improve preservation and safety and it will expand the inspections to the rental, single and two-family. Now, there is, there's some mention of the overzealous inspections and somehow that's going to hasten demolition. We do have variance procedures for cases such as mentioned, medallion homes or some special situations. The housing inspections are different in approach from new building inspections. We work with a different code, as Mr. Smythe mentioned, but I do not believe that this would in any way, shape or, or form threaten our housing stock. I think it's just going to make it safer and help to preserve it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Charlie Smythe?
I think at this point, it's probably appropriate to move the ordinance before we look at the amendments. Isn't that correct? Yeah. Okay. So I'd like to move ordinance number 2006-08-109, an ordinance to establish a rental registration program for residential property within the city of Urbana.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Smythe and seconded by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion?
Billy.
We've got amendments. I'm not sure what the number of the amendments are. Jim Gitz, would you like to go through the amendments? Or could they all be put into one?
We've got two.
We've got three pieces of, well, three different ones that I see here. So I'm, I'm a little confused on the numbering.
Would you like a, a short description of these?
Right. And I also have the question, should we vote on them individually or can they all be put together in one?
I think that's, I think that's up to the council to decide.
Okay. Why don't you just go through them?
I'd like to be separate so that they were sequential.
Okay. Why don't you just go through them in order and then we could have a motion on each one of them? Is that the way to do it?
I, I think the first amendment, I'm not sure, Madam Clerk, you could correct me. I think there are two previous amendments. She's signaling yes. So this would be amendment number three. This is several pages. This takes into account some comments that were forwarded from different reviews that were made of the ordinance. The first is a slight change in the definition of rental property and it also includes subleases. This is basically to make sure that you cannot use a corporate subterfuge of subleasing to try to circumvent the ordinance. On page two, there's an amendment to section 10 on classifications. This is the amendment that's been discussed on the floor, which was agreed in concept, but not put forward. This is a rewrite of class F and essentially the rewrite provides three criteria that are tied very closely to a revocation. One is a condition which renders the unit unsuitable for habitation according to health, life, safety or property maintenance codes. Two, a willful violation of the zoning code, including occupancy, or three, the use of the unit for a criminal purpose. There's some other technicalities within it. There was some questions raised about a local agent requirement. Those are addressed on page three. Essentially, the, the question was this, could a, a business meet the requirement of a local agent simply by having a post office or mailing address if it was a corporate entity and still qualify under the ordinance by simply having some type of phone access in 24 hours a day? We sought to clarify this through local agent requirement and to indicate that this is done by operating a business or owner residence within a 60-mile limit. There is a minor clarification, safety and security. This is Brandon's amendment from previous that basically indicates that there is an exception for owner occupied rental units which are exempt from the key requirement. The way that was literally worded, someone who was renting a room could give their own children a key on the premises and I think that we're in agreement that that's probably not a good outcome. The not last amendment on this package was on violations and this is tracking section F. It basically narrows the focus for refusing registration or revoking. It ties it to the hearing requirement and it also includes the requirement that was suggested by Esther Pat for notification of tenants as a part of any such proceeding.
I guess I have a question. This is amendment number three. Now, what about amendments one and two?
I believe amendment number one was adopted and then there was a, a further amendment that was not the original amendment two, but another change that was made in the ordinance.
So in other words, we're not going to deal with amendments one and two?
Well, no. Those are already included in the ordinance and that's the underlying language that was and deletions that were included in the draft and.
So that's the draft that we have? That's the ordinance?
So everything in your, your copy that has underlining deletion reflects those amendments that were previously adopted by the council.
Okay. I understand. All right. Is there a discussion on amendment number three? Charlie Smythe?
I'd like to move amendment number three.
Second.
Lynn, we already got Brandon to second it, but let, let, he'll let you second it, okay? Since you couldn't hear him. All right. Charlie Smythe, amendment number three, seconded by Lynn Barnes. Any discussion on amendment number three? All those in favor of amendment number three, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
None.
Okay. Motion carries. Mr. Gitz.
Amendment four addresses an issue that the mayor brought up, which was by including language on subleases, could we somehow construe an owner as bringing within a tenant who is leasing, subleasing their premises? Certainly that's not the intent of the ordinance, but I think that you could, by reading the ordinance in a very interesting way, conclude that that could be read that way. So the primary thrust of this amendment is to make sure that that does not occur and that is done by defining an owner by adding a sentence that says the term, meaning owner, shall not include a lessee who previously occupied a rental unit and who has subleasing a unit for the remaining part of his or her lease. Also, this language seeks to avoid some type of business or corporate subterfuge to use the subleasing. So this clarifies an owner and the practical fact of this amendment would be to remove a, a sublease from the definition of owner and therefore take it out of the ordinance. The remaining items in here are just simply word changes and technicalities and misspellings that were identified along the way. I don't think that they need a particular itemization. The amendments kind of speak for themselves.
Charlie Smythe?
I'd like to move amendment number four.
Second.
Okay. Amendment four is moved by Charlie Smythe and seconded by Brandon Bowersox. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of amendment number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. That motion, that amendment carries. Now, let us vote on the ordinance as amended.
If I could make a comment?
Charlie?
Yeah. As many of you know, the, this, this ordinance comes out of over a year's work by a number of different people, number of different groups. And it's primarily concerned with tenant safety. It was a, a component of, of the election platform of a number of us and it was incorporated into the city's goals. It's part of goal number four. It has the support from three of our neighborhood groups. It has support from the university. The chancellor's office has made comments on it. The student senate has also passed a motion in favor of it. We've gotten a petition via Dave Johnson and Peggy Catton that was circulated in the western Urbana neighborhood with a number of signatures. Our goal is safer housing for renters. We've had inspection of apartments for over 20 years and now we're expanding to rental houses and duplexes as well. In addition, we're developing a registration system so we can better track the 10,000-plus units that we have in this community. We're one of the few college cities without such a system, something we need because we have such a large population renting. Last month, I opened, in fact, this is the December 21 issue of the News Gazette and on it are two stories concerning champagne and carbon monoxide poisoning. We had a death in one rental house and we had four or five college students nearly killed in an apartment complex. Champagne doesn't have inspection. Their, their equivalent of our community development department is asking for rental or is asking for a systematic inspection program to, we've already got it, we're expanding ours. I'm proud to say we've had it for over 20 years. Community is like Bloomington Normal have recognized it. Normal's had it for like 30 years. Bloomington Normal is an expanding community, expanding faster than we are and doing better. You know, so I'm not too worried about this being a negative for our community. In fact, I think it very much is a positive. We've had, seen too much of demolition through neglect and demolition through neglect is properties being ignored for years and years and years. And if this thing works right, then, you know, we'll be able to go after that. And I think that's the point that Libby was making earlier. So, you know, we're trying to avoid the death of, of renters. We've seen that happen. We've seen some close calls now. So I think it's, it's perfectly within, well, we should do everything within our power to put in place the mechanisms that guarantee the safety of the many folks that rent in our community. You know, combined with the upcoming changes to our property maintenance code and the systematic way that those will be enforced and hopefully will make those even better than they're proposed and we'll see that over the next two to four weeks, we'll have better tools to deal with rundown and unsafe properties. Thank you.
Would the clerk please call the roll? This is a motion by Mr. Smythe, seconded by Mr. Lewis, to approve ordinance number 2006-08-109 to establish a rental registration program. Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
No.
Okay. The motion carries and I want to thank everybody who has worked on this ordinance and we've certainly taken our time discussing it. If there's anything wrong with it, we'll fix it. We're going to have a formal evaluation after 18 months. So the News Gazette reporter has begged me to get this ordinance passed, so you wouldn't have to write about it anymore. So, thank you all and I, I, I think it's something that's going to work well, but as I said, if it doesn't, we will fix whatever needs to be fixed. And I'd like to thank Libby Tyler and the staff of community development and Jim Gitz for all the time that they put in on this. Thank you very much.
Yes, can't help.
Okay. Moving on, ordinance number 2006-11-137, an ordinance amending chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Urbana, adding registration fees for residential properties being rented within the city of Urbana to the schedule of fees. And Dr. Libby Tyler, would you like to talk about this?
No update since this was last at council. It's still the same ordinance with the $45 change that was made last time.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Charlie Smythe, seconded by Robert Lewis. Any discussion on the fees? If not, would the clerk? Oh, Mr. Roberts?
A clarification, I guess. This actually doesn't have to do the ordinance itself, but the addendum, which is the rental agreement. And on the. And on the bottom of it, there are fees that are indicated for, which are punishable by fine, between $500 and $2,500 for perjury. Does the city council feel that these fees should remain at that height, or are we going to indicate a fee that would be equal to the $135 and the $750 range that was established for meeting the appropriate, the appropriate fine levels for not, for being in violation of the ordinance?
Jim may want to jump in. This is a reference to another section of our code. It's a fine amount, and we have had a lot of comments on the rental agreement addendum. It's not part of the ordinance. We will be working on the form of that to make sure it's accurate and correct. So, the schedule of fees ordinance that is being considered tonight just has to do with the registration fees.
Only.
Fees pertinent to that. The perjury relates to another section entirely of the ordinance, and we just want to make sure the citation's correct, but...
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
No.
Okay, that ordinance passes. Next, reports of standing committees, the committee of the whole.
This myself.
Dennis Roberts?
Okay, the committee of the whole having met previously, we forwarded several different ordinances to the city council for consideration, and I'll go through them at this time. First, we're looking at ordinance number 2006-09-121, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, and this concerns the landfill remediation costs 2007. For the committee, I move adoption.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Mr. Smythe. Is there any discussion? This requires a roll call, two-thirds majority, and the mayor gets to vote, so would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mayor pressing. Yes, okay, that ordinance passes. Mr. Roberts?
Yes. The second ordinance under consideration is ordinance number 2007-01-007, an ordinance amending Schedule H of section 23-93 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, requiring a stop signs at certain intersections, these being Milford Drive and Landis Farm Roads. For the committee, I move its adoption.
Okay, motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Mr. Smythe. Is there any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance passes. Roberts?
Okay. The third item is an ordinance number 2007-01-004, an ordinance approving a public improvement and reimbursement agreement, and this concerns the Myers' property. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Mr. Lewis. Ms. Stevenson?
I've had several calls this week regarding the Myers' store, and because it's in my ward, I've had a lot of constituents calling, concerned about privacy and things like that. I reiterated that Meyer will be a good neighbor, and that I'm sure that whatever is asked of the Myers' store to be done to buffer any sound and light and noise and stuff like that that would affect the Stone Creek neighborhood and the Meyer Ridge neighborhood, that all of those things will be taken into consideration, and that I thought the appropriate person to call about those issues would be Bill Gray, because he would know where the roads are and what kind of buffers and stuff could be used. So, while I really encourage economic development, I also want to, my constituents that have called me to know that their voice is heard, and that Meyer will be a good neighbor, and that they're going to, I'm sure, do everything they can to make sure that the neighbors come to their place of business.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Mr. Smythe?
Yeah, maybe this would help Heather's constituents a bit if, at some point, we could put together the site plan, is that, once that's available. I, you know, we've seen early versions, it includes a lot of birmingham and landscaping and that sort of thing, that I know that we've seen and we're reassured considerably, but as soon as that could be made available to the public, maybe that would be something that would be very useful. I might even be able to put parts of it on the webpage.
I think we did, but we'll look at that and get it on there. And I think they have scheduled a public meeting with some neighbors. Is that taking place yet, Libby, do you know? I know that they're working on trying to schedule a, their own meeting with, immediately...
I'm hearing the word, I'm hearing the number 26th come up. Is that January, February? We're not sure yet.
Next week.
Next week.
In any event, they're going, they have scheduled a meeting with the immediately adjacent property owners, and we'll make sure that the site plans on...
Thursday, the 25th? Bill's got it.
Meyer is hosting a meeting with area residents, particularly those to the east, and the meeting will be held at 6 o'clock on Thursday, January 25th, at St. Matthew's Lutheran Church. So, next Thursday, January 25th, 6 o'clock, Meyer Neighborhood Meeting at St. Matthew's. And they'll discuss the landscaping, the birmingham, the lighting, sound, those types of issues.
Thank you, Bill Gray, our Public Works Director. I think that they do have a very good plan, and I'm happy to see that they're going to involve the neighbors and invite people to come in and take a look at it. Okay, any other discussion on this ordinance? If not, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance passes. Mr. Roberts?
Okay, the next item is a resolution from the committee of the whole coming to council. Resolution number 2007-01-002R, a resolution regarding the historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association document entitled Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association Neighborhood Plan. And for the committee, I move its adoption.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Mr. Smythe. Any discussion? All those in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the resolution passes.
Most excellent.
Mr. Roberts?
Okay. The last item is ordinance number 2007-01-005, an ordinance amending a development incentive agreement with CTC Properties LLC. And for the committee, I move its adoption.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Mr. Smythe. Any discussion of this one? If not, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That ordinance passes. Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next, ordinance number 2007-01-011, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat for Cobble Creek Subdivision Number One. And Robert Myers, our planner, is here to explain it.
Real quickly, this has 38 residential lots, residential subdivisions located between Amber Lane and Windsor Road. You've already voted on and approved the preliminary plat, and the final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat, so unless you have any questions, city staff is recommending for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Heather Stevenson, seconded by Robert Lewis. Any discussion? All those in, no, this is an ordinance. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
She said yes?
She said yes.
Okay. Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance passes. Next is ordinance number 2007-01-012, an ordinance approving a revised preliminary subdivision plat for Pines at Stone Creek Commons. Robert Myers?
Okay, back in July 2006, council approved a preliminary plat, a final plat, for the Pines at Stone Creek Commons. And as you remember, this is a commercial subdivision at Southeast corner of Windsor and Philo Roads, and they've come back with some changes that they're requesting based on the market, what they're encountering with the market. The most significant change is they're adding in the detention basin that was previously platted into this subdivision, so they can change the lots, so we'll have some frontage on that subdivision. The changes are not so substantial that it would need to go back to the plan commission. We've already determined that. And so, with that, we're, city staff is recommending approval for the revised preliminary plat in addition to the final plat. I do want to make one quick note. On the ordinance itself, the title, it says, "An ordinance approving a revised final subdivision plat." We can just strike that word revised from finals, from that statement. Just call it, "An ordinance approving a final subdivision plat," because the previous plat was approved by council but was never filed, so... Right, we have two ordinances that we're dealing with. You may want to deal with that in omnibus fashion both at the same time.
I would move...
Can we do that, omnibus fashion?
Sure.
I would move approval of ordinance number 2007-01-012.
I second that.
Without the word revised.
I seconded it.
Heather Stevenson, seconded by Dennis Roberts?
I have a question.
And Dennis Roberts has a question.
Yeah, Robert, can you, can you explain, or can you define for me a little bit the change that has to do between the original version, which must have appeared much earlier, when there was the development in the center area, which was called Lot 204, I think it was, which in the current version is considered Lot 501? And what I'm wondering is, is this an area that is now considered a non-develop area? Is this like a part of the detention pond drainage area, and is people, this won't be a filled-in, built-in area, or is this, is this a large central located plot in the plat that will be developed commercially?
It will be the latter. It's, that Lot 207 that you see, that's where the pond is located, and obviously, that won't change.
No, that's not what I'm talking about.
Right, but the lot that you're talking about next to it, that large central lot?
Just north of that, yeah.
Yes, that is going to be developed for commercial, and some preliminary plans I've seen show two buildings that I recall, two low-rise commercial buildings.
Okay, so that's like one very large commercial lot?
Yes.
Okay, that just wasn't clear, it didn't seem to have a really clear access or street involvement, but I guess it's too soon to see streets and layouts.
Well, it's, the large central lot, it's fronting on Boulder Drive, and it's also going to have access over on Philo as well. So, they're going to have two points of access for that large central lot.
Okay, all right. That clarifies it then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just one, if you want to vote on them one at, one at a time, ordinance number 2007-01-012, don't strike the word revised from the preliminary subdivision plat.
You actually just, I was thinking the same thing, because then it says on the 13-013, the final.
Right, just strike the word revised from 013.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
He's saying revised preliminary.
Revised preliminary.
I think it's the same way, but strike revised in 013.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on this one? If not, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance passes. Next, we have ordinance number 2007-01-013, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat for the Pines at Stone Creek Commons, Phase One.
I second that.
Okay, the ordinance, the motion is made by Ms. Stevenson and seconded by Mr. Roberts. Is there any other discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance carries. I did bypass a couple of items here on the corrected agenda. Reports of special committees, I don't believe we have any. Reports of officers? All right, then the next item is a closed session for pending litigation pursuant to...
I move that we go into closed session to review pending litigation issues pursuant to chapter five of Illinois Consolidated Statutes, 120 over 2, C2.
Okay, the motion by Mr. Smythe, seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, we're going into closed session.